Good evening. I'd like to let you know we have two meetings scheduled for tonight. The first is a City of Urbana City Council special meeting, and that'll be followed immediately by the regular Committee of the Whole meeting. So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the special meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. And we do expect Chandra Bishop to attend via phone. Next item is, there are no minutes. Next item is additions to the agenda, and I would ask for a motion to switch the order and put item H ahead of item G. That would be the mayoral appointment going before the resolution authorizing the execution of the Chief of Police employment agreement.
I'll move that we make that switch on the agenda.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next up is presentations and public input. We have no presentations scheduled, so if anyone wishes to address the special meeting of the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council input and communications. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. So I want to invite the public this Thursday, June 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 25 O'clock Brewery. That's on, it's 208 West Gritty Street. We're gonna do a budget exercise, and the public is invited to help prioritize the city's future spending. That's June 8th, Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. at 25 O'clock Brewery.
Anyone else? All right, move on to reports of officers. There are none. We'll move on to unfinished business. The first item is ordinance number 2023-05-016, which is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate at 131 and 205 North Race Street in Urbana.
Thank you. We had brought this proposed acquisition to council at the Committee of the Whole on May 22nd, and you approved the, you approved the ordinance, and I just, the school district requested a small change. The purchase price is the same, $113,000 for their property on Race Street, but they asked, in light of the favorable purchase price, if the city would agree to pay for what are traditionally seller borne costs, which are for title insurance and the closing costs. And we've estimated that those will not exceed $3,000, so I'm recommending that we make that change. You had a redlined version of the contract in the packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carol? Is there a motion?
Move approval of ordinance number 2023-05-016, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate at 131 and 205 North Race Street.
Second.
Second.
I'll give James the second this time. Is that okay?
Okay.
Spread it around. Any further discussion? Grace?
Sorry, I thought of a question. I wasn't fast enough on the draw. If I could just clarify that this is for purchase only with no intended future use of the site. Is that correct?
That's correct. If, if we get to the point where we think the best course of action is to bring a request for proposals forward, we'll, we'll bring that to the council for your input.
Have you had comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is mayoral appointments. This would be for Chief of Police, Chief Larry Boone, for a period from June 5th, 2023, I'd like to welcome Famy Fletcher, Human Resources Manager, and Chief Boone. Welcome. It's good to see you again. I am pleased to submit the following appointment for your approval. This is for Larry Boone as Chief of Police, effective June 5th, 2023, through June 30th, 2025. Chief Larry Boone is a 33-year law enforcement professional who retired as Chief of Police for the Norfolk, Virginia Police Department in 2022. He has experience in many operational and administrative positions in Norfolk, including patrol officer, special enforcement division, metro tack officer, K-9 officer, internal affairs, detective, Homeland Security Division, corporal, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and deputy chief. During his time at NPD, he was named Officer of the Year and nominated a second year, and won a Medal of Valor from the Virginia Police Work Dog Association. He was also awarded a Distinguished Service Medal, received 34 commendation letters and awards, and was an FBI National Academy graduate. Additionally, Mr. Boone was recognized nationally in 2020 for building trust through community programs by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and subsequently recognized nationally and internationally for managing civil unrest in Norfolk following the killing of George Floyd. Mr. Boone holds a Bachelor of Arts in Graphic Design from Georgia Southern University, and a Master of Public Administration from Old Dominion University. He served as the police chief for the last six years of his tenure at Norfolk. I believe, Famy, you had comments and information to provide.
Yes, I just wanted to give a brief summary again of the process.
Make sure your mic's on.
It is, but I'll get it closer to, closer to me. Just a brief summary of the process by which we have arrived here today. As you all know, the former Chief of Police, Bryant Zeriffin, retired in April of 2022. The city then contracted with Poly Hire, an executive search firm, to conduct a national search, which had been ongoing now for a little over a year. The position was posted in the fall of 2022. During that time, Poly Hire sourced, vetted, referred candidates. The city also underwent, undertook some community engagement efforts. Excuse me, Poly Hire posted an online survey to gather community feedback, to ascertain the, the characteristics and experience and qualities that the community would like to see in their next Chief of Police. In February and January of 2023, city staff, including myself, Mayor Marlin, city administrator Mitten, and interim Chief Rich Searls, did interview a slate of candidates referred to us by Poly Hire as the top candidates that were, that were sourced during that recruitment, and it became very evident very quickly that Mr. Boone was far and away the, the most qualified candidate and would be the best fit for the City of Urbana. So we're pleased to have him here tonight, and I just want to give him a chance to say a few words.
Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, I am truly humbled to have this opportunity to join the Urbana family. I believe very deeply inside of me the obstacles that you face with respect to community relations I face often in the City of Norfolk. My pedigree and my background says that I've been able to connect authentically police, community, city government, so that we all work as one, moving in the right direction. I will only guarantee you this, that the department you see today will be different going forward. They are some incredible women and men. I've met quite a few. And one of the things that strike me is that when I am having these conversations, not just with the officers, but with yourself, Madam Mayor, your quiet strength, I see that and I recognize that. And I see the same in the folks that report to you, to include our women and men of the Urbana Police Department. With that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move, I'd like to move for approval of the appointment of Chief of Police Larry Boone from June 5th to Ju-, June 5th, 2023, to June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I speak, these comments are just my personal opinions. They do not reflect any other city council member or the City of Urbana government. They are strictly my personal opinions. I had the opportunity to attend the two town halls on May 4th at the Vineyard Church. I have to say that I completely agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "The majority of policemen are good people, and that's a fact," end quote. That has certainly been my experience. I also agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "We get it right far more than we get it wrong." That is true. I agree with Chief Boone, who said at the town hall, quote, "I believe at the end of the day, when it comes to discipline of officers, that recommendation should be with the Chief of Police," end quote. Yep, I agree on that, too. I'm totally on board with Chief Boone's comment, quote, "I love data, I don't hide it," end quote. And, quote, "I'm a data guy, I capture everything," end quote. We're definitely on the same page there. I agree with Chief Boone when he said Urbana doesn't need a military tank. I also agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "We have to be intentional, we have to have hard conversations, we have to give praise when praise is due, we have to hold folks accountable when that's due," end quote. And Chief Boone said, quote, "I'm going to challenge the community, I'm going to challenge city council, I'm going to challenge folks to recognize these officers when they do good things," end quote. To that end, I hope we can have commendation and promotion ceremonies during city council meetings on the television, like the Urbana Fire Department has been doing. Chief Boone is right, we need to give our police officers the credit and the encouragement when it's deserved. I completely agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "The way we get over this issue surrounding trust, we have to be extremely transparent," end quote. And Chief Boone said at the town hall, quote, "Being intentional from law enforcement is going to require you to sometimes to be vulnerable. That's okay, that's okay, and that's fine. That's how we grow together," end quote. With that in mind, I disagree with Chief Boone's comment at the town hall where he said, quote, "I understand police get a raw deal, particularly the last two or three years," end quote. Nope, not true, in my opinion. The real deal the police have gotten since George Floyd are hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, lateral transfer bonuses, and a wage increase every single year since 2020, and will get an every year wage increase until 2026. Since George Floyd, this city council has allocated over $30 million to just law enforcement. Gregory Brown got a raw deal. Kiwan Carrington got a raw deal. Trayvon Martin got a raw deal. Tamir Rice got a raw deal. Eric Garner got a raw deal. Philando Castillo got a raw deal. Toya Fraser got a raw deal. Richie Turner got a raw deal. Officer Chris Oberheim got a raw deal, and Tyree Nichols got a raw deal, to name just a few. The 18,000 police departments across the nation, including this one, are doing just fine since George Floyd. This playing of the victim card some police representatives use to silence legitimate criticism is behavior unbecoming of an officer, a gentleman, and a lady who claim to be heroes. Heroes with good intent don't mind oversight, transparency, and accountability. What the public has demanded since George Floyd is some accountability and change in police conduct. Chief Boone, you yourself said in your cover letter to your resume, quote, "The unfortunate incident surrounding George Floyd has placed the law enforcement profession on notice that the community will no longer accept police practices and behaviors of the past," end quote, which I completely agree with. The public has rightly criticized the system of policing. In fact, had it been left to this system, George Floyd would have just, would have been just another statistic, and no one would have ever heard of George Floyd. For shortly after George Floyd was killed, the Minneapolis Police Department spokesman, John Elder, told the press and the public that George Floyd died of medical complications while resisting arrest, just like six years earlier in Chicago when police representatives told the television stations that Laquan McDonald lunged at police with a knife before Officer Jason Van Dyke opened fire 16 times. Which is why I so completely agree with Chief Boone when he said at the town hall, quote, "Once you lie or steal, you have tarnished the badge," end quote. And Chief Boone said, quote, "There's mistakes of the heart, stealing, lying, things of that nature. You have to be terminated, you have to be separated from this environment," end quote, which I completely agree with Chief Boone there, too. I also disagree with Chief Boone's characterization that SWAT teams and narcotics, narcotics enforcement are, quote, "A great time," end quote, and somehow, quote, "Sexy," end quote. This is the exact police culture and police cowboy mentality we are trying to eradicate. Chief Boone knows darn well that if his house was suddenly breached by numerous police officers dressed in tactical gear pointing rifles at Chief Boone and his family, the last thing he would ever think is this is all very sexy and a great time. And out of respect for the 3,500 prison inmates who are currently living in an Illinois State prison, stripped apart from their families and lives on a drug conviction, the utter failure and devastation that is the 40-year drug war is hardly what can be called a great time or sexy. I believe the love for people in Chief Boone's heart can overcome these millisecond mental mistakes set on a stage during a pop quiz in front of an audience. Had I been up there on May 4th, I would have been making mistakes left and right. Some might say I'm making mistakes right now. But the seriousness of uses of force and the catastrophic drug war failure cannot let me overlook, overlook what Chief Boone called sexy and a great time. I hope the Chief can understand. Everything Chief Boone says will be used in the court of public opinion to encourage the Chief and support the Chief to do the right thing. For in the end, as the Chief already well knows, it's not about you, Chief, and it certainly isn't about me. It's about them. Point to the audience. If you look at the City of Urbana's organizational chart, you'll see who is at the top, who is the real boss. It's the taxpayers, the citizens of Urbana who pay for the salaries, the buildings, and supplies for this entire government. I welcome you and invite you, Chief Boone, to come help us serve these people. If you stick around, I believe you will find the citizens of Urbana are well worth it, in my opinion. Thanks for letting me speak.
Further comments? James?
Thank you. I'll say a, a second for some of Chris's statements. Thank you for laying things out, and thank you to Larry Boone for your interest in serving in Urbana. And I had a question. This is a question time?
One question.
My one question is if you could please clarify your opinion on increasing transparency and public oversight within the department?
If I understand you correctly, are you referring to the CRB, and how would I embrace that process?
Just in general, theoretically, kind of for or against increasing transparency and public oversight of the department?
Well, I can give you some examples when transparency is necessary and immediate. Officer-involved shootings, excessive force situations that catch the attention of myself or my staff. Those transparency issues only go to increasing the trust of your force. I, I don't hide anything. The gentleman here mentioned being vulnerable. Sometimes, when you are the tip of the spear, the only way to navigate, to offset tension is through transparency. And I want to cement this. I come from a city of 250,000 in which protests occurred every day. And during that time, because of my transparency and processes and terms in how I reacted to things when officers didn't always do the best thing, that city saw no rioting, no looting, no arrests, because I had built that social capital. So when you speak about transparency and what that looks like in a broad scope, it's being authentic about how you go about your business and how you deal with the community immediately when something of concern surfaces. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
We'll move on to James, and then call for a vote.
All right. First of all, I want to say, thank you, Chief Boone, for putting your hat in the ring. I do want to say that as a council member, it's always important to have a good process when we're looking for appointment like this. I, I have felt that during this process that I was fully engaged, that I had the information that I needed as it went forward, and appreciated the opportunity that was made throughout that process to have time to talk to Chief Boone, and to observe the opportunities that were made to the public, to have that kind of engagement. I did, a couple of weeks ago, have the opportunity to speak to four of our officers at the farmer's market, and took that opportunity to ask them, unfortunately, two of them were RANU, which is good news, they had just been sworn in, so they didn't have an experience, but two of them who had been on the force, when I said, "Did you have a chance to engage in the process as we were looking for a police chief?", they both told me that yes, and that they felt they were engaged, and that they had a voice in, in the process, and I, and that was important to me as well. The public, the council, the staff are all part of this going forward. So I want to, I want to thank our Human Resources team for, for running the process and for how it's been done, and I look forward to voting shortly.
Mary Alice?
I, I don't have anything formally prepared. I will say that this has been a very interesting process. The staff have been fabulous, open, and been providing us information as we go through this process. Chief Boone, you've been here, I think, twice now, and you've sat through hours upon hours of discussions with many different people, so I thank you for your time in this process. I will say, from a personal perspective, that I am energized. We have a public safety review going on. The next step after that, of course, is to have the right people in place for us to be able to move it forward. So I, I certainly think that Chief Boone, joining the force and, and leading the force through that process, is a very positive step. So thank you very much, and I do approve, I do plan on voting for this.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead, Chandra.
Okay, I was just making sure you could hear me. Hello, I just want to say that I'm excited to, to have Chief Boone on our, our Urbana staff. I'm looking forward to everything he can bring and the experiences that he brings with him in his long career in law enforcement. I think it's, will inject new energy into the police department as well as the city. I'm looking forward to all the things that he will bring with his, his experience, including, you know, community relationship building, as well as different ideas that will create a better and safer Urbana. So I will be supporting this appointment.
Thank you. All right, I'm going, Jay.
All right, I think everybody wants to say, I mean, it has been a really important process. I think it's worth making sure that people understand that council absolutely was part of this. Again, major credit to the city staff. I, I think this is an important moment for the City of Urbana. We're a city that talks about, you know, wanting to see change, being progressive, and I, I think we found the candidate to do that. I, I fully expect that you will challenge us, and that there are going to be moments where we challenge you, but that's the democratic process, right? Is making sure that we're representing the residents that we are here to speak for and, in support of, and then also making sure that we are at the cutting edge of what safety can mean, right? That that can mean a lot of different things. So it's going to be, it's going to be a new day, it's going to be a change, but I'm, I'm appreciative of the process, and I'm, I'm very hopeful for the, the future of our city. So thank you.
Sharice?
I'm just still excited that you're here. After talking to you and, and having conversation with you about the different experiences, yet also common experiences that we seem to have had, I really looked forward and hoped that you would fit in, and you have, with the City of Urbana, with our family. And I'm really hoping as well that, as the years, because I expect you to be here for years, as the years go by, that more and more of our Urbana communities will also embrace you and embrace you as part of the community. I don't, I don't like adversarial, I don't like to have to be adversarial. And I look forward to working with you in the future. I look forward to, to us being able to have some plain talk, like I said before, as I have with every chief that I've come across, starting with Chief, you know, with Bryant and with Richard, and, and I hope to have that same kind of back and forth with you as well. So, welcome.
And before we vote, I would like to thank the HR Department, especially Famy Fletcher, for leading this, coordinating this effort on our end. I also wanted to express my thanks to interim Chief Rich Searls, who, it's not an interim chief, he, it has been the chief the past year, and I appreciate everything he has done, and the work, the extraordinary amount of work put in by the men and women of the Urbana Police Department. So thank you. So I would now ask for a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And officially welcome to Urbana. We've been saying that for the past three months, but this time, you got to stay. And that is resolution authorizing the execution of the Chief of Police employment agreement and authorizing staff to implement the agreement. Elizabeth Hannan and Famy Fletcher.
So I'll start this off. As you know, we now have a very highly qualified police chief, and we're excited about that. He's very well qualified, he has considerable experience. In addition to that, the current market for filling these types of positions is extremely competitive. We were very fortunate to be able to attract Mr. Boone. He was much sought after, even by much larger cities, and for us to be competitive against other potential employers, we had to sharpen our pencils. The resolution that, that we're asking you to approve, again, would give the mayor the authority to execute the employment agreement, which has already been signed by Mr. Boone. In addition, it would give me the authority to implement certain aspects of the agreement, including the defined contribution retirement plan. So Famy's going to review just a couple of highlights of the agreement.
So you all have seen this, but I'll just, I'll just touch on the major points. This agreement is, defines the, the scope and the term and conditions of Mr. Boone's employment while he is employed with the City of Urbana. It includes a compensation package that includes an gross annual salary of $205,000. Also, the city's executive management benefits package, which is afforded to all members of city management. It also includes the defined eligibility for the defined contribution plan that Elizabeth spoke of just a few minutes ago, which would allow vesting after, full vesting after four years of service. Other items include an annual uniform allowance, take-home car, which are also customary for this. for this position. It also includes up to $20,000 of reimbursement for relocation expenses. Mr. Boone has expressed genuine interest in residing here in the city of Urbana. We do understand that we can't guarantee the housing market or housing availability, but if he is able to relocate within the Urbana city limits within the six months that he has to relocate, he will receive a $10,000 signing bonus. There are some other points in the agreement, notwithstanding the reappointment process and the biennial appointment process. There is a severance package included if Mr. Boone separates under the terms of this contract of 20 weeks of severance, which is what we're allowed to offer in the state of Illinois.
Technical questions. Chris?
So is Chief Boone the highest-paid city employee and the highest-paid city employee in city history?
I didn't quite hear the end of the second part of your question, I apologize.
Is he the highest-paid employee in the history of the city of Urbana?
I don't have that information available. I would imagine probably yes, and he will be the highest-paid employee that we have.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Got a motion?
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
There's one I didn't have a chance to see and talk with you about beforehand, which was in the separation about the employee having the right to declare amendments to changes in, substantial changes to the form of government relating to their roles. I was curious if that's a standard thing, if that's been in previous positions. I can't find the employment agreements for our previous police chiefs.
So that's, it's commonly included in governmental employment agreements. For example, if this government were to change, if this city were to change its form of government, that would, that is the language that would trigger the employee being able to make amendments, if that makes sense.
So do you know if this was included in previous ones? Understandable if you don't know off the top of your head, but if that's standard that we have for other city positions?
I don't believe that any of our previous police chiefs had an employment agreement.
Was there any other employment contract? Is that different from an agreement? I imagine they had something that they were operating under.
No, I don't believe they did.
No, they did not.
So we can't compare because that, there's no point of comparison.
Very interesting. Am I asked why that was?
I don't think that we could really say why that was. Nobody asked for it, nobody demanded it. That's not a standard thing that we do here at the city of Urbana. This particular candidate felt that it was important, and that was part of the, as part of the negotiation, he wanted to have an employment agreement.
Yeah, it seems pretty standard in my experiences, so, thank you.
Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I will move approval of Resolution Number 2023-06071R, a resolution authorizing the execution of a chief of police employment agreement and authorizing staff to implement the agreement.
Second.
By Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Grace?
Thank you. I will also echo thank you to the staff for the information throughout this process. I am generally in support, I'm in support of having employment contracts in general. I guess I'll start off with that one. And generally in support of this, I do think personally that it's a lot of money, more money than I know what to do with, living in champagne Urbana, and I also understand some of the reasonings for needing to be competitive. I hope that Chief Boone is able to locate within Urbana. And I do have some concerns about this language in the contract that I was previously questioning. While I do understand, you know, any major changes to their duties being, you know, an issue, I hope that it doesn't limit us as far as the changes that we've talked about wanting to do together, that there may be some changes for good that we agree on, and I guess I'll have to hope that that is the case. But I will just express some concerns that the way this is written, you know, if we wanted to restructure some things, then that gives him cause to consider his contract terminated under employee choice, it looks like. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Chandra, are you there? That motion passes. Thank you. And with no further business before this special meeting, we are adjourned.